Helps if I turn my mic on, I guess. Good evening. My name is Chuck Martin. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Responsibilities of this body are to advise the Mayor of Council and the Planning and Development Services Department on the adoption of long-range plans, policies, specific plans, and regulations that affect land use and development. Will staff please call the role?
Yes, Chair Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Gaff?
Here.
Commissioner Fink?
Here.
Commissioner Cassidy, absent. Commissioner McBride Olsen? Absent. Commissioner Pafford? I think I saw him here. But I'll come back then. Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Saylor Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ortiz Pino?
Here.
Commissioner Lucia?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz? Absent. And Commissioner Pafford, are you here?
Here. I finally managed to get it sorted.
Good. Excellent. We have a corner. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call the next item, item number two, approval of the legal action report for June 16, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor recommend, recommend inside of the mayor council say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Say nay. Hearing none, the item passes. Next item is item number three, public hearing for home-based hair salons, UDC amendment. Would staff please provide their presentation for item three?
Excellent. Thank you, Chair Martin. Thank you, Commission. Appreciate it. So item number three is home-based hair salons. Make sure you can see my screen. This is a review of a proposed text amendment to the Unified Development Code related to hair salon as home occupation. And this is a public hearing. So give you a little bit of background on this. We came back, we were with, you know, came to present this to you back in May. So, related to home-based hair salon, this was an item that was allowed as a home occupation land use in the City of Tucson zoning code prior to 1980. Back in the 1980s, home-based hair salons were prohibited to align with restrictions that were imposed by the Pima County wastewater due to concerns about chemicals and water safety at that time. Within the last 10 years, those restrictions were removed by Pima County wastewater following guidance and regulations that were done at the state level. And allowing for the kind of the removal now for us for the prohibition within our Unified Development Code. So, kind of going back to March 18, 2021, Councilmember Kaczak and Vice Mayor Lee requested to study session item to discuss the the changing Tucson's local regulations related to home-based hair salon. It was related to COVID. There were people that wanted to kind of shift their business to working from home. And it was one of three, one of three uses that were prohibited within the Unified Development Code. At the April 20, 2021, study session, Mayor and Council held a study session on home-based hair salon and directed staff to remove the restriction for home-based hair salon and increase the occupancy for these businesses to one client at a time with a maximum of 10 clients per day. We came to you with that direction from Mayor and Council on May 19, 2021. You had held a study session to review the proposed UDC code amendments related to home-based hair salon. And the recommendation from the Planning Commission at the time was to adjust the proposal to apply to all home-based businesses. And to look into retail sales potentially related to this and whether or not they should be allowed within those businesses. And then you set it for a public hearing. Just getting back to you, we did do some research related to the retail sales. This is actually an issue, we talked to our zoning administrator, they were very concerned that that would cause a lot of issues and a lot of traffic in neighborhoods. We already have a lot of complaints about people doing retail sales out of their homes. So it was not recommended by our zoning administrator due to the potential impacts related to that. But we did, as you'll see, make some changes related to applying it to other home-based businesses for the other regulation. So, basically reviewed, basically the issue here, home-based hair salons are commonly allowed as a home occupation land use throughout the state, but they're prohibited in Tucson. It was originally prohibited by the Pima County wastewater. Since it's been lifted, we are in a situation where we can approve it. So the proposed amendment is in front of you is to allow the UDC to allow for hair salon as a home occupation. And then amend the occupancy limit for home-based occupation to more than, no more than 10 clients per day. And only one client at a time to be permitted on site. That looks like this. It is very minimal. Last time we had a few more words, it's really only a change of, an addition of one word and removal of three. To allow for 10 clients per day, one at a time, and then removing the hair salon from the other, from the prohibited uses within those home occupations. So with that, staff recommends Plan Commission approve a motion to recommend approval of the home-based hair salon's UDC text amendment to the City of Tucson Mayor and Council. And with that, we will take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Is there any commissioners that have any questions for staff at this time?
Chuck, I have one.
Yes.
The, the issue about retail sales, my, since I got from our discussion last month, or when we heard, I guess it was last month, was to allow retail sales to clients as opposed to creating a home occupation retail business, which I think is, which I would agree would cause lots of problems. But are there, what kind of problems would there be if the sales could only be to one of the 10 clients that come to the house? So if I go and get my haircut from my neighborhood home occupation hairstylist, and she's got a shampoo there that I really like, what's the harm in me buying the shampoo from her when I'm already there? I would see this as different than me and 30 other people going to her and going, oh, we all want to buy your shampoo. Does that make sense? I mean, does that make sense?
Commissioner Fink, yeah, no, not entirely. And that's the reason why we went back to our zoning administrator and then talked to her and then kind of went through this. Part of the issue is the fact that the home occupation is already an accessory use. So we, the way our code set up, having an accessory use to an accessory use is difficult and it could potentially lead to problem. She just wasn't comfortable with this due to potential issues related to it. I mean, I, who knows, you know, I, I mean, I think it's very hard to to regulate whether or not they're actually selling things on site when the, when the client comes in. But, but her guidance was to not, was that we should not be allowing for retail sales. And that's the reason why it's in the code.
But if you're only allowed 10 people to come to your house anyway, even if the person doesn't get their haircut, that counts as one of their clients. So I'm having a hard time seeing what the harm is. And what the problem would be.
Yeah, well, and I think part of the issue is the fact that we've seen a lot of complaints related to this, especially post-COVID, to where people have moved their businesses to their house. A lot of this ends up being complaint. It goes to code enforcement and then it takes a long time for anything to be resolved with that. So again, it's more of a protection and I believe that's the reason why, why she was hesitant on this.
Well, okay, but it seems like the concern that you've expressed would apply to any home occupation. So again, I guess we're just, I'm just going to have to disagree with, with your zoning administrator because I just don't see the problem, but I won't drag this out any longer.
Are there any other commissioners that have questions for staff? I, I don't see anybody's hand up, or I guess. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to members of the public who would like to speak about this item. In general, there's a three to five minute time limit for speaker, which may be extended at the discretion of the chair. Members of the commission may ask questions of the speakers. But we do not ask. But we do ask that each speaker be timely and we do not, and we want to make sure that those who would like to, are, sorry, be heard, have the opportunity. I do not have any signed up to speak. I don't know if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak to this item. Say anybody, Daniel?
Sorry, I was muted. We do not see anybody. If, if you'd like to speak, feel free to raise your hand, but I don't, I don't believe anybody has spoken up or raised their hand.
Given that no one's here to speak, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
May I have a second? Did you get who? Second, or was, Daniel? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those, say nay. Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Are there any? I'd like to open it up for a general discussion with the commission members. Or anybody that'd like to speak? Seeing none. Call for motion to recommend this home-based hair salon text, UDC text amendment to Mayor Council.
I'll move. Thomas.
Thanks, Thomas. May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of recommending the side of the mayor council, say aye. Is that a motion to approve it, Thomas? A favorable recommendation, I'm sorry.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion passes. How many of us are there? Eight?
I believe there are 10, actually.
Actually, wow, good. 10, with a favorable, favorable recommendation to Mayor Council. Thank you. Next item is additional drawing units, UDC text amendment. This is a study session. For the staff, please provide a presentation.
Oh, good after, or good evening, Chair Martin. And I just wanted to jump in here real quick. So Mayor and Council initiated this back in November of last year. They had intended, at least some of them, to get this going a couple of years ago. I think what kind of spurred their actions back in November was the HUD report showing there were 9,000 units short of affordable housing in Tucson and another, actually region-wide, 12,000 units short in the county. So they initiated this move to consider accessory dwelling units. Over the last few months, Dan has done, and his group has done a fantastic job. They put together a stakeholders group. There were seven meetings of the community stakeholders. And then that moved into discussions with the public, of which there were three meetings. The public meetings were well-attended. The online platform seems to have stimulate better attendance. What we saw in the, in the constituents that were attending these meetings was a different demographic now. And many of you are aware, we go to a public meeting and we all know each other by names. We see the same faces, the same testimony coming out. That was not the case in this particular one. We did see a lot of the same face and a lot of same names, but a lot of the Generation Z has weighed in on this and the younger millennials have been coming to the table now to talk about this. So a different demographic has appeared to talk about housing, which is new for us. This has generated some pretty decent passion in the responses coming in out of the public. You can expect to see some very, very pro ADU and some very, very no ADU comments coming in. Please keep in mind that the, the public comments that you'll be receiving between now and your public meeting are just that, they're comments until you hold your hearing. So don't let your thought process be influenced one way or the other by early comments. Because you're going to see quite a number of materials come in. So it's been a fascinating process. A new demographic is participating. This is a new opportunity for housing for Tucson. This example has been used in many, many, many cities throughout the United States. So the opportunity to consider it has finally come to Tucson. Dan and his crew have done a very thorough job of running the technicalities of it. And running a very thorough and vetted public process. So I just wanted to give credit where it's due and then make you aware that things are changing in land use discussions within the city of Tucson. And so we're seeing a much broader sweep of our population come and discuss these issues. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dan and stop talking.
Excellent. Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Chair Martin, and the Planning Commission. Really appreciate that. So item number four is accessory dwelling unit. This is to review a proposed text amendment to the Unified Development Code related to accessory dwelling, and if it is a study session to inform you of this to date. So, so what we're coming to you with here is a proposal related to accessory dwelling unit that will essentially allow for one, they're generally called ADUs, ADU per residential lot. This would limit the maximum size to 1,000 square feet. It requires, at least in the proposal we have now, one parking space with waivers for proximity to transit and bike routes. And then it would require a cool roof to try to mitigate some of the potential urban heat island effects that come from that. This is a result, as Scott was saying, of a pretty extensive public process to inform this proposal. So we had seven stakeholder meetings of 40 members. It actually started as a smaller group, but it kind of grew as we went, as people wanted to be involved, whoever was, wanted to be involved was able to be, was invited to our meetings. We had seven public meetings with 200 plus attendees total. Actually, I say 200 plus, it was actually closer to 400. It was 200 plus each for each group of public meetings. So we had a group of three initially back in February, and we had another group in May. There were 78 online comments with our first online comment forum. It was more of a free forum and then post the, after we put out the proposal, we put up a new survey and there have so far been, as of yesterday, 157 survey responses. I think a couple have come in today. Mostly positive response from the community with this. So 72%, we did a poll both at our public meetings and on the survey. Say that they either strongly agree or somewhat agree that the proposal will benefit the community. But there are some concerns related to some of these things. So ADU size, owner occupancy, historic preservation, short-term rentals, affordability, parking, things that you're going to see with, with new development, things of that sort. So we'll go into those and we'll address, try to address some of those concerns as we're going through the proposal with you here today. So to start you off, kind of as Scott was saying, you know, this, on November 17, 2020, really is when Mayor and Council held a study session to begin this process to revise Unified Development Code accessory dwelling units. At that meeting, they provided the following staff. I'm just going to read through this, just so you kind of are aware of what they told us to go and look at. So they, they basically said, initiate an amendment to the Unified Development Code, which would define and permit accessory dwelling units. Identify the zones where they, where they are appropriate and create development standards regulating unit size, height, minimum lot size, maximum lot coverage, setbacks, parking requirements, and other relevant aspects to promote the accessible and attainable, and attainable housing options in a manner that is compatible with existing neighborhoods. And then they told us to begin a public outreach on the amendment, inclusive outreach to hear from a variety of constituents that includes often overlooked communities such as communities of color, loaned-in communities, renters, homeowners, and other stakeholders. And then they told us to return to Mayor and Council with a proposed amendment in June 2021, which may have been a bit optimistic considering today is the last day of June and we are not at Mayor and Council. However, we are moving forward with this amendment. So what is an accessory dwelling unit? An accessory dwelling unit is an independent housing unit with its own kitchen, bathroom, living, and sleeping space. And the main key here is really the kitchen, as I'll talk a little bit about in a little, in the future slide. We have a thing called the sleeping quarters, which is pretty close to an ADU that we allow now. It just doesn't allow for a full kitchen. These units are typically under 1,000 square feet and are accessory to a primary residence. The one key thing you'll notice, they can be known as a lot of things, casitas, mother-in-law units, granny flats, backyard cottages, carriage houses. One thing you'll notice on here is that the term tiny house is not listed. Just because it really can mean a lot of different things and a lot of times it's on wheels. This is not that. This is on a permanent foundation. And it's, what's interesting about this is that it really was a common housing type in Tucson. Historically, they were allowed up until, in the city, up until 1948, when we wrote them out of our zoning code. So it is something that you see in older neighborhoods and historic neighborhoods and is a common, a common thing that we have throughout the city. And additionally, it's something that's already allowed in a lot of communities in Arizona and it's becoming more popular. So something we're seeing happen kind of in the region and in the country. It can be in a lot of different forms. It can be detached, attached. You could potentially use an upstairs space for it, a basement. Or a garage conversion. Really, the most common ones we see are really like the garage conversion and the detached versions, but they can be other forms as well. Just kind of let you know how that works. This is kind of just giving you an example of how it kind of fits in the neighborhood. This is a casita in, in, in Miles. This is a smaller unit that is, has alley access, so it can be accessed through an alley or maybe an interior courtyard or in a different place. And then, you know, obviously with a smaller unit and things of that sort, a lot of times they, they get creative with kind of how it's ranged and how, how it's set up for, for those situations. So what are the reasons really for this code amendment? There are a number of reasons related to it, and, but some of the key ones that we kind of started with on this are affordable housing. And, you know, there, as Scott was talking about, some of the data that's really coming out related to affordable housing, especially in Tucson, is that it were rapidly becoming a very, you know, we're losing the affordability in our, in our, in our, in our community. So recent data from, from the most recent housing study that we just did shows that many families and members, you know, that 50% of renters are currently cost burdened. That is that they spend more than 30% of their housing costs. And these are things that we are looking to potentially address with this. We do know that this isn't the, the solution for everything. It's just a piece of the pie. But it is definitely one of, one of the strategies for helping to ease some of that affordable housing issue. Housing options for senior, senior population is growing. A lot of them, many of them want to age in place and caregiver, and have caregivers nearby. And reside with family members in multi-generational households. We're looking at, you know, it's a good way to do that. And then climate action and resiliency, you know, the Mayor and Council declared a climate emergency in September last year. ADUs are a good way to promote energy efficient housing, but also infill development that uses existing infrastructure and divert development from the periphery and new development that may use up, you know, kind of pristine desert and things of that sort. So, so with that, kind of to get to this point, this is essentially where we've been, where we are. This kind of shows, you know, the starting in November, moving through the process. And then holding our stakeholder groups monthly from December through June. A couple of public meetings in February and May. We had the online survey that was open. And then we went and presented to the Commission on Equitable Housing kind of right before we were, we pulled out the presentation. And then now we're, we're at our study session. So those, the group that really kind of guided this process was this stakeholder, was the stakeholder group. And that's been meeting really since December and June. We polled a lot of people and kind of pulled, as far as recommendations for this group, and it really was about 40 members who are representing a variety of community perspectives and voices. Some of those groups that were included were neighborhoods. We had local architects, planners. We had people from different housing organizations or local nonprofits like Pima County, Pima Council on Aging, Habitat for Humanity. We brought in people from universities. So we had people from U of A and Kaplan who came, came as well. There was a member from AARP. AARP has been really big accessory dwelling units and pushing and kind of supporting them. So we had a, you know, a member who was a member of AARP, as well as some of our traditional kind of development organizations such as MPA, Metropolitan Pima Alliance, Southern Arizona Home Builders, and Tucson Realtors. So a pretty diverse wide group of people that were involved within that process. This is kind of how it went with the process. So back in December, we kind of introduced people to the topic. We talked about background and goals, kind of came up with goals for the amendment. Case studies from other communities. So we looked at other communities both in Arizona and outside. And then we talked about a project timeline and kind of what we were looking at. And then we slowly kind of went through and kind of introduced people to current zoning regulations. We continued to refine the goals and issues throughout. So we came back to that again and talked about prioritization of those. Then February, we started kind of getting into the nuts and bolts about different aspects of this. So we brought some test scenarios. We've been working with Obstacle Design, who is a leader in, they coined the term middle, missing middle housing. They are experts in this type of thing. They helped us to develop scenarios related to this to kind of understand how it would fit. And then talked about maintaining lot coverage and height regulations, talked about standards, how, how we can take setbacks and create flexible options. And then talked about appropriate size restrictions at that meeting. Moving forward, we talked about at the March meeting, and this was representative and, and based on a lot of the feedback as well from the February public meeting as well. We started talking about owner occupancy, group dwelling, short-term rentals. These are all things that I will talk about when we talk about, a little bit about the the proposal. At that meeting, moved on to the next one. There was some concern really about the actual affordability of this. And, and we have that concern as well, just with the cost of construction these days. Cost of property, everything that goes along with it. So we talked a bit about affordable housing, talked about parking and parking issues that could be a potential issue. And then from there, we developed a draft proposal. And in May, we presented the draft proposal to the stakeholder meeting. And then we also presented it to the public meeting as well. And then from there, we, we got feedback on the draft proposal. And then had a draft code amendment that we presented earlier this month in June, which is what you have in front of you here. So the goals that the code, that the code amendment, as prioritized by the stakeholder group are these. Increase the supply of affordable housing, encourage flexible options for seniors who wish to age in place. Support multi-generational households, support climate resilient and sustainable infill development that supports multimodal transportation. Provide supplemental income to landowners and support local economic stability. Allow diverse and flexible housing options within a neighborhood and promote mixed, mixed income communities. Permit a housing style that already exists in our community and provide a legal avenue for upgrades. So something similar to like an amnesty program, allowing for people to take sleeping quarters and add a kitchen. And then retain neighborhood character within that. So we had to stick, so we had these goals that we had refined really throughout the whole process. And then we also came up with issues that really needed to be addressed, that are kind of based off some of those goals. Looking at, you know, the appropriate districts and, and size and site standards for ADUs. So making sure that we have the appropriate building area, height and setbacks. Occupancy, rentals, group dwelling, short-term rentals, talk about all of those and how we need to address some of those. Parking and vehicular access, affordability and the cost of developing ADU, as I had spoken to earlier, we'll talk a little bit about that. Speculation and impact on property taxes, privacy mitigation, enforcement and monitoring, sustainability and heat island effect, building standards, and then historic standards and compatibility. There was some concern about historic standards and how this would affect those. So overall, really throughout this whole process, we did, we had seven meetings of 40 stakeholder groups, 400 plus people at those public meetings, 76 online comments and 152 surveys received. Really, we have received, as you'll see, I will go through the surveys after we go through the proposal. We've had mostly positive feedback today, but there are still are those concerns related to ADU size, impact on historic, affordability, sustainability and urban heat island effect, and owner occupancy requirement. I did want to mention just kind of the structure of some of those public meetings. We, you know, because they were online and we were doing these virtually because of COVID and things of that sort. We tried to make them as interactive as possible. The first one that we did, we had breakout groups to get people into smaller groups and actually talk about each of their different issues and have conversations related to that. And then the second one, we presented the proposal and then allowed for people to kind of self-select into, into groups related to different topics. And those were ADU size, their parking, affordability, sustainability, and things of that sort. And we got a lot of great feedback from those that have helped to kind of inform where we're at today. So with that, we have our draft ADU amendment proposal for you. So with that, we have our draft ADU amendment proposal for you. And before we get into that, I just want to kind of mention a little bit about what is allowed today. So currently, what is allowed, we have two things that are kind of similar to accessory dwelling units but aren't quite accessory dwelling units. The first one is the sleeping quarters. So this is allowed on any residentially zoned parcel with a residential use. So it doesn't matter if you're allowed to to build a sleeping court. They are limited to fifty percent of the size of the principal structure. So if you have a thousand square foot home, five hundred square feet. If you have a two thousand square foot home, thousand square feet and et cetera, you know, twenty-four hundred, whatever. And then that's that's how the size goes related to sleeping quarters. Kitchenette is allowed, a full kitchen is not. So you can have a mini fridge and a hot plate, but you cannot have a range. You cannot have a full-size fridge. No additional parking is required for that. So we don't have any parking requirements related to sleeping quarters. The max building height is twelve feet unless attached to a principal structure. And if it is, then it can go up to the height of whatever the zone is. So most zones are around twenty-five feet. So you could potentially have a sleeping quarters as long as it's attached or has a breezeway, twenty-five feet within any of the residential zones currently. So kind of similar, just doesn't have that full kitchen. Second residential units. So these are allowed in the R one, R two and R three zones based on lot size. So there are, so basically in in R one, if you have a lot that's larger than ten thousand square feet, you can build a whole second unit. I live in 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 an A zone. I have, you know, if I I have a house right now that is, you know, fourteen hundred square feet or where I could potentially, the only restriction is that one need to be twenty-five percent bigger than the other. I could potentially build, you know, twenty-five hundred square foot home in my backyard for a second residential unit currently with our code. Full kitchen is allowed for those. Parking is required for this. So you would have to park this based on whatever our standards are. And then the max building height could be the same as the primary block, so twenty-five. Those are currently in place. That's what you can do now. There is, you know, it's it's a good portion of the lots that are currently out there that allow for a secondary residential unit, but it's not all of them. And it's not, it's definitely not. It's not so, you know, widely, you know, there aren't that many. It's probably like probably thirty or so percent of our one lots. A little higher for our two. So so this is, so this is the proposal. So where can you build an ADU? So all lots with a single family and two-family residents may build one AD accessory dwelling unit. For existing homes and newer subdivisions, single-family residents may have one ADU so long as it meets the lot, meets the lot government requirement. So they have to still meet all of those standards. As long as they can fit it, they could put a new ADU on there. For new subdivisions, ADUs count as half of a unit for density calculations. So you could potentially have a new subdivision that has little ADUs that goes along with it with a proposal, but they do have, they do count for density calculations related to that. We found that, so one of the choices that we had related to this was just whether we do it based on user zone. It makes more sense to do it based on use because there are residential lots and commercial zones. There are residential lots in an office zones as well. And there are large portions of neighborhoods that are in office and commercial zones. So it made more really tie it to residential use related for that. So building size, building size, the proposed regulation that we have in front of you is a thousand square feet maximum size of the of the accessory dwelling unit. We believe allows for enough space for two-bedroom unit, but the smaller size limits the impact on the neighborhood and surrounding property. It's simple to understand, so because it's a flat amount and not percentage, kind of like the sleeping quarters is. And in the sleep, the percentage, you know, is a bit arbitrary too. It tends to penalize some houses. Even though it really, it's it's not, it's not based on, you know, kind of how, what you can fit on that lot. So one thing that we do have related to this is just the fact that our impact fees, we we just recently passed new impact fees last year. We changed the structure of them to where you have lower impact fees that are less than seven hundred and fifty square feet. So one thing to consider here is that you're incentivized to have an ADU of less than seven hundred square feet, seven hundred and fifty square feet. So for, if you wanted to build an ADU that was seven hundred and fifty square feet, it would be two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars in impact fees. If you were to build one that was greater than that, it would be forty-three hundred square or forty-three hundred dollars. So it almost doubles it by just jumping up one square footage to seven fifty-one essentially. Okay, so there's that. So one of, one thing that we will notice and we'll go through the the survey results is that when we looked at our survey result responses and the feedback from those public meetings, the most varied responses are really related to ADU building size. So one thing we wanted to do, and we we presented this to the to our stakeholder meeting, and we wanted to present this to you so we could get your feedback on it, is discussion for potential refinement related to this. So one of the things that we brought up to them was this potential for a two-tier approach. And there's a couple of options here. And we're we're looking to get feedback from you on this and kind of as we move forward. But option one is nine hundred and fifty square feet maximum for all conforming lot sizes. So if you're in R one, you have a seven thousand square foot lot or larger, you'd be able to do the nine hundred and fifty square feet maximum. If you weren't, if you were below that, it would go down to seven hundred and fifty square feet for the non-conforming lot. So that's option one. Option two would just be seven hundred and fifty square feet maximum for all lots smaller than five thousand. It's kind of similar to the R two requirement. So that's another option potentially that that you could, you know, if you think about and provide feedback to us related to. These would provide options. There was concern really about just kind of the scale where you had, as you had smaller lots that the the ADU would just wouldn't fit properly on that lot to where a thousand square foot, you know, a square foot ADU may not be appropriate in a four thousand square foot lot, that type of thing. So that that is, that is one thing that we are looking for feedback from you on related to that. So proposed setbacks and dimensional standards. So there are no proposed changes to setbacks, maximum building height or maximum lot coverage. We do have an option currently in our code for reductions of those. So using the existing design development option would be an option to reduce setbacks on a site-by-site basis. What's nice about that is it has notification of neighbors, so they know if you're doing that. But it also allows for us to put conditions on that too, to help mitigate potential privacy issues if you were to get closer to the to the to the property line or something of that sort. So the reason why we're why we're proposing this is that one, it's simple for applicants to understand and staff to administer. We did a, so that's the the one overall thing is the fact that it's consistent with what we're doing. We did a bunch of test fit and staff analysis early on, if you think back to the February when we were doing that. And ADUs will fit, will will fit on lots by using the existing dimensional standards on almost all lots, which typically limit, you know, residential building heights to twenty-five feet, lot coverage to seventy percent and require a twenty-foot minimum setback and six-foot perimeter guard setback. So it generally fits on those lots as it is, so it doesn't really require us to make any changes. And then you can use that that DDO option if you need that. There have been concerns about building height with the fact that there are a lot of, you know, single-family, single-story residences. There's a couple of things that help with that. One is we have variable setbacks in our code that helps to mitigate that. I mean, that's why they were built in there. So as your building gets higher, it forces you to move back further. So it's basically two-thirds the height of a building. So if you were to do a, let's say, a two-story ADU of twenty-four feet, you would have to set that back instead of six feet, sixteen feet. So an additional ten feet back from that, from that property line. So that helps. I I think one of the things that that's kind of related to this is just the fact that as is, I mean, property owners can already build two stories with an addition into their primary structure. They can add a add a story onto their current home. They can, they can add on addition in the back that might be two stories. So it's in line with with what they can currently do within the code on their primary structure and how they're doing that as well. So it's consistent for that. So related to just kind of existing building standards. So this is the whole tiny home thing. It is not a tiny home. It must be on a permanent foundation. And then ADUs must comply with inclusive home design regulations such as zero step entry, grab bars, et cetera. So this was put into our, it was basically adopted ordinance back in two thousand and seven. It requires accessible entrances, doorways and routes. So again, that whole aging in place thing, there were concerns about, you know, how accessibility related to some of those things. And and that that will remain in place and will be applied to to these structures. Related to privacy mitigation and historic design standards. So related to this, there are, we do have historic reservation zones and neighborhood reservation zones, design standards and review process that will continue to be applied in those areas. So this doesn't supersede any of those. They are added on top and that's where they've been. And they've always done that to to items like this. So they still have to go through that that process related to that. It's a small portion of the city, but it is was a concern of people as well. One of the things that we have also heard as a concern related to this is just the potential for, we have a lot of these National Register Historic Districts and the potential for this ordinance to de-list properties and people would lose their their tax credits that they currently have within those neighborhoods. And they'd lose their their district status. So this is something that we we are aware of. There's a couple of things related to this. One is that the current proposal does not allow for a detached ADU to be built in front of a primary structure. This is, this is consistent with our code that we've had for accessory structures. It does not allow for that. That would be the one thing that could potentially de-list the structure. Even though there are definitely situations, when we've talked to our Historic Preservation Office, that where you could potentially, you know, build one in the front and it could still not be listed. And then as a lot of you may know, historic districts to keep its status must keep, you know, fifty percent of its structure listed as contributing. So the items that lead to de-listing are changes to the primary facade, additions to solid walls over forty-eight feet in front of the contributing structure, not the development of an accessory building behind a historic structure. Even if that structure were taller than the primary structure and can be seen from the public right-of-way, the development of an ADU in a backyard would not impact the building's contributing status and would not affect the neighborhood, neighborhood, National Historic Register Historic District status. You know, I, I, property owners as is concurrently choose to make make modifications that would potentially de-list it, such as building a wall in front, changing the whole facade of their building. There's one around the corner that just recently stuckled their brick. I mean, that would de-list it. This, from from conversations we've had with our Historic Preservation Officer from SHPO, this would not do so and would not get, you know, potentially get rid of that tax break for 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 those communities and for those neighborhoods. One other thing I do want to mention here is that, you know, we we, there was recently a survey that came out related to this, kind of polling preservation professionals all over the country. And it came, it was pretty positive. And it was, it was basically stated in that survey that this is one way, like a good way to slowly build density throughout a city that doesn't actually affect the historic status of a lot of those neighborhoods. So they they actually cited it as as a beneficial way and a way to potentially do that without having a huge effect on the historic status and the historic character of different neighborhoods. So related to parking, so the parking proposal we have in front of you, we have one parking space required per accessory dwelling unit. This requirement may be satisfied through onsite or on-street parking. On-street parking may require use of the city's parking permit program. So that's, you know, in certain neighborhoods and we've been in conversation with Park Tucson and 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 them related to this. The parking requirement can be waived based on proximity to transit or bike boulevards. And I want to say enhanced bike routes, because we we had a conversation related to this. And it's actually like, if you think of mountain, mountain functions as well, if not better than any bike boulevard in the city, but it's not technically a bike boulevard. So enhanced bike bike routes would be the more appropriate one for that. And then parking may be accessed from alleys. Per UDC regulation, they require that there's dust control and that it's an actual alley. So we already do that review. We we allow for parking in off of alleys as long as it meets those definitions. And then parking requirements for sites with five plus bedrooms in R one zones, it's triggered only with onsite parking. So there was concern that came up in one of our, in one of our stakeholder meetings of if you have that additional requirement, then it gets waived. Are you still going to require them to move all of their parking and pave the whole side and back of their yard? And we don't really, if it's being waived or put on on the street, it does not appear that 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 would be a reason to do so. So that 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 is one thing that that we have gone back and looked at. It's a slight change from what we presented to our stakeholder meeting previously for that. And we do want to point that out. So I I just want to, just related to this, there are concerns about parking and impact of parking on neighborhoods and things of that sort. Right now, we're really looking to reach a balance between mitigating, you know, potential parking issues while not requiring parking when it's not needed. Requiring onsite parking when it's unnecessary. It it only adds unneeded impervious surface, it increased costs to homeowners. We're in this balance here. We want to make sure that it's affordable. We want to make sure that that it's something that's that's palatable by the community. We we believe that this strikes that balance related to that and how to do that. Related to ADU occupancy, this is something that's been a big topic. We are not proposing any owner occupancy requirements. We do want to say that the occupancy of ADUs must still comply with group dwelling regulations. We we understand the issues related to mini dorms and and especially in some of the neighborhoods near the university. This has no impact on that whatsoever, though they're still in place. But it's been a really robust conversation related to this. And, you know, I know there's a lot of concerns related to this, related to, you know, potential increase in rentals and 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 behavioral issues. But there are some real reasons why this is the case. You know, owner occupancy requirements, they make financing of ADUs more difficult. So we're trying to figure out ways to 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 make sure that these are affordable and people can get financing. It makes that more difficult. Such requirements limit appraised values of property. So again, if you at some point want to sell, it creates problems related to to the actual cost or if actual, how much your your home is worth. It it also related to that, an option such as renting out a main home should you have to relocate for a job or if a family member gets inherits a property and doesn't want to sell, it creates issues related to that. Proposed limitations, we do believe that the proposed limitations on the ADU size do help to 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 address those behavioral issues. So there is that. But, you know, ultimately, when it comes down to it, enforcing owner occupancy, that's difficult and the rules have been challenged in courts a lot of times. We're seeing that regulations, even when they're in in a lot of other communities that have been out there, only really the small communities are the ones that that can actually go through and 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 regulate them and keep up with them. We we polled about ten different communities and the ones that did have them have actually been been removing them of recent years just because of that. There is also concern about, you know, short-term rentals, and this is something that we've we've heard. Currently, Arizona law prohibits city and county from restricting the use or regulating vacation and short-term rentals. So we are severely limited in how this works. There has been some suggestions to do something similar to Phoenix. Tucson has a requirement for, so in Phoenix, basically, they have a webpage and they require you to go on there and register your 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 short-term rental, Airbnb, VRBO, whatever it is, and put it on there and just have contact information essentially. So we do that. We do that through our business license. We require them to to register a business license with the city. There's also a behavioral issue, a behavioral aspect of the one in Phoenix. We have that as well with our red tag ordinance. So we are kind of doing that. It may be something we can figure out how to like make it a little easier to app, to to access and that type of thing. But we we understand the issue, but we're really limited on what we can do by the state related to that. And then a couple of the other concerns that we have heard, there's the concern about increasing rentals in neighborhoods. This is something that's a nationwide trend, you know, as as we, you know, over years, fewer people can either afford to buy homes or choose to do so because they potentially need to move move for a job or family or things of that sort. So it's a nationwide trend of increasing rentals that we're starting to see. One other thing that we, you know, I I know there's this idea that potentially, you know, allowing for ADUs might, you know, spur on more rentals, more more rentals, or I guess the conversion of owner occupied to rentals. You know, and and we've looked into this. I I really can't find any evidence that the adoption of an ADU ordinance results in conversion to owner occupied units from those into rental units. And it's something that I we, you know, we we haven't seen and we 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 are looking into. So that's that. Sustainability. We, again, this is another one where you're trying to find the balance essentially on this. We are proposing, I put animation on there. All new ADU must be developed with a cool roof to address urban heat island effect. So this came up as an issue in a lot of our comments. We were seeing a lot of people that were concerned about, you know, new development, urban heat island effect and how this new development, urban heat out effect and how this could potentially impact that. Um, it does also meet the, it needs to meet the current energy code as well. So new construction is the most efficient construction out there right now, right? Compared to all of the stuff in the sixties that was built with a swamp cooler and then put an AC unit on top and it's really leaky and is incredibly wasteful. So, um, so it, it does need to meet the current energy code. Um, what we found is, we, 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 because we were concerned about this, we actually reached out to, um, U of A to get a better understanding, uh, about this and actually spoke to former commissioner Keith, um, about this. Um, as you know, he does a lot of research related to, to, um, the effects of, of extreme heat things of that sort. And, and from, from, from talking to him, he kind of turned us on to this, uh, this, this study that was done about of Savano. And the research generally shows from what he is showing us that gradually increasing density such as ADU will not itself increase urban heat out effect. Um, one of the things that kind of came out of that Savano study is also that new development with light colored roofs or cool roofs, um, can actually reduce urban heat out effect when developed on previous barren, barren ground. So you could actually improve the situation if you were to require, um, a cool roof, uh, with the situation, um, depending on what the first, what the situation was prior. Um, so it's, it's really interesting. Uh, and, and so one of the, that's one of the reasons why we came at this with requiring the cool roof, um, for this, uh, for this proposal is to kind of help to mitigate that or potentially improve it. Um, we have heard some concerns about water. Um, and related to water, uh, one of the best tools for reducing per capita water consumption is increasing density, um, and redirecting development that could, that could have been led to sprawl, sprawl and bringing them into the city. Um, it's commonly known that if you increase density, per capita water, water use reduces. So again, this, this does address that as well through that. Um, and then finally, just kind of related to sustainability, you know, um, it is, infill, um, and support infill is an infuse of increasing, uh, uh, existing infrastructure, increased density to support transit, all these other things. Those are all things that are, um, are very sustainable and are inherently sustainable with accessory dwelling units. Um, so the summary of the proposal, um, 1,000 square foot maximum ADU, uh, and then with discussion of course of our tiered options. Um, 1 ADU allowed per residential lot, uh, one parking space required per ADU with reductions for transit access and use of on-street parking allowed. Um, no owner occupancy requirements, existing height, lot coverage and setbacks standards apply, and then a cool roof is required. Um, so there's a couple more things kind of related to this. So part of, part of what we've noticed with this is that you can do so much with zoning, um, but there's other things that you need to do beyond just zoning code changes, um, that address some of these issues that you're trying to get at. So, um, so related to kind of ADUs and affordable housing, affordable housing has been one of those issues. Are they affordable? Like, how is it really affordable? I mean, I think there's the one, there's a difference between just the, 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 the government subsidized affordability and then just generally affordable housing and people, people being able to afford their housing, you know, paying less than 30% of your income on housing. So what it does is it adds supply of housing for our community. Um, market rate ADU, so this is kind of interesting too. And this is one, you know, we were doing some research on things, that market rate ADUs tend to rent for less than is typical for the neighborhood, um, where the ADU is located. So it promotes those mixed income neighborhoods. So this would be one of those situations where, you know, let's say there's an ADU in Sam Hughes. Normally you wouldn't be able to rent out a whole house. You may not be able to actually own a home there, but you could potentially live in that neighborhood. And then, you know, you would be able to bike places. You would be able to, um, I guess Flora Market, you could walk to Flora Market, do things of that sort. Um, smaller units can, can be lower cost to rent, as, as we said there. Um, units can also be developed, um, and rented for lower costs using subsidies incentives. So we're looking at potential incentive programs to allow for, um, for, for some of this. Um, units can provide additional income for, for homeowners, um, making homeownership more sustainable and, and promoting neighborhood stability. So it allows for that stable income coming in so someone can stay in their home, um, or potentially own a home. Um, and then many units, uh, really are not rented in the market. And this is kind of that other portion of affordability. Instead of serving as housing for family members or friends. So, um, instead of having to go to a, um, assisted living set, uh, home or something of that sort, they're living with you and that cost isn't there of being in the assistant living center. Um, so to support this beyond the, the code amendments, um, we have a couple of things that we're looking at doing as well. Um, and this would be a addition. So these are what we call ADU supportive programs. Um, related to affordable housing, um, we're looking at, you know, potentially setting up partnerships with, uh, organizations like Quadro or Pima County, uh, uh, Community Land Trust to conduct outreach and provide technical assistance to low and moderate income households, um, develop model plans that can be used to br- to bring down costs through design competition or other means. Um, and then exploring local funding options and provide financial assistance. So, um, you know, making, creating partnerships with local lenders, um, to try to figure out how we can get things financed. Um, one other thing that we could potentially do here, and this would be again incentive programs that, um, would be for homeowners. They, they, they wouldn't be for everyone, but there would be restrictions on them, would be things like building permit waivers. Um, we, uh, it's, it's a little more difficult to do waivers for, um, for impact fees. Um, but I mean, I, I went, we went through and did a little, um, a little calculation on how much it costs just to permit a structure and it's just under $5,000. Um, that's a pretty big chunk of change when you're starting to come out and try to have to build an ADU. Um, so looking at, at options for potentially incentivizing, um, homeownership and homeowners who come in and do this. Um, and then the other one is amnesty for unpermitted and, and, and guest houses or sleeping quarters. Um, so we're looking at an amnesty program that could be developed, um, for those. So there are a lot of these sleeping quarters that I think people would like to put a full kitchen in. Um, and, uh, figuring out a way to bring them, to allow for them to do that. Um, and then also, um, figuring out ways to encourage property owners to come and get their permits on, on ones that maybe haven't been permitted, um, in, in, over the last, uh, 20, 30 years and that type of thing. Um, there's a set time limit on that. Um, we're looking at potentially two years, uh, which could be extended beyond that. Um, that's pretty consistent with what we've seen in other communities. Um, Durango had a, had a program that was pretty successful related to this. Um, so again, these are, i- i- if you see, saw, uh, you know, we've talked about the stakeholder group, um, they're going to be really helpful and beneficial, um, in, as far as we're, we're hoping to kind of transition some of that conversation into how do we get these pro- programs set up. So, um, before we're done, I just want to go through the online survey results. So what I presented there to you is pretty much the same thing that we presented at the public meeting, um, as well as to the stakeholder group. Um, after the public meeting, we put up a brand new online survey, um, related to this to get feedback on how people felt about it. So I'm going to go through the survey results relatively quickly. This is all, all in your materials. Um, and we're happy to answer any additional questions related to it. So the new survey was posted online, asked in public meetings on the 25th. We have, uh, had 157 responses yesterday. Um, it's kind of an online forum, um, related to it. Um, so these are kind of where we've, um, where we've heard from people. Um, as you can see, it's, um, you know, it's, it's, it's all over, but it's not. Um, there are definitely clusters of, of, um, of, of, of where people are, but we do have representation from the West. We have people from midtown, further east, even, even pretty far out east, Houghton and that area over there. Um, one area that's kind of glaringly missing here, and this is something we've been trying to kind of, um, to, to, to fix is really just kind of, um, you know, south Tucson. Um, as you start getting south of the 10, there are just, we just haven't had many responses and, and related to that. Um, but that's, that's essentially where we've, where we've, uh, heard from people. Um, we ask people, um, the draft proposal where they, they need refinements. Um, you'll see this kind of topic throughout. Um, ADU size and site standards has really been the one that people have been focusing on. Um, you know, they talked a bit about affordability, I think came in second, well, it's parking and then affordability, um, and occupancy. Um, but it really has been ADU size and site standards. That's, that's been the one with the most variability. I mean, you'll see that here. So what's kind of interesting here, we kind of set it up as almost like a Likert scale to where it's this, it's, um, it goes really from left to right. So on the far left of these graphs, it's, it's far too permissive than the kind of cyan or aqua is reasonable, but too permissive. The middle, the purple is proposal about right. Um, the yellow is reasonable, but too, too restrictive. And then the, the one on the right is far too restrictive. Um, so as you can see with all of these, the top category really is the proposal is just about right, um, or is about right. Um, you see more variability obviously in the left one on the ADU building size. And that's the reason why we brought those other options to you. Um, but as you look at these, you know, if you add up the middle three categories, which are people that think it's reasonable, but maybe just a little either too permissive or too restrictive, you know, ADU size, 65% said that it falls in that category, even with that one. Um, development standard, 70.3%, um, parking was 68% related to that. Um, you'll see even more kind of, of the, the, the yellow or the, the, the purple bar being higher for these as well, right? So you have sustainability, owner occupancy and one per ADU lot. All of them you see, yes, there's, 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 there's other people that have answered other things, but most of the people that we're getting are falling in that middle category. So, um, sustainability, 84.6 are within those middle three. Um, owner occupancy, 68.6 in that middle three, and then 1 ADU per lot is at 78.7. So this, you know, we, we, we know there's a lot of, there's people all over the place. Um, and our goal here a lot of times is really to try to build, build, build a proposal that is reflective of what we've done and what we've heard. Um, and this at least tends to lead us to that, to, to that fact that we feel that we, you know, we at least have crafted something that is somewhat, that is representative of what we've heard so far. Um, so, and then initial survey results and will, will this benefit the community? And as you can see here, um, and this is just a survey, we did this also at the public meeting, but, um, the, the biggest group is the strongly agree group that we have there. Um, there's about, you know, 65% of people are in the top two categories. Um, there is a group that, um, that is very definitely against this, um, would strongly disagree and it's close to 20% in that group. Um, it's, uh, it's interesting. I read through the, I've read through all the responses. Um, but they're not all, um, against this. A lot of them just don't feel that it's a big enough step as well. So there's people on both sides that, um, that are just, you know, that are in that group as well. But it's very interesting and, and all of those materials are, are in your, um, in your materials. You can look at if you want to go through all, it's all the comments. Um, so with that, um, a staff recommends planning commission approve a motion to set the accessory dwelling unit UDC text amendment for a public hearing on July 20, 2021. Um, and we're more than happy to answer any questions. Um, and we are, um, excited to get your feedback. Thank you.
I thank you, Dan. Um, I'd like to now open this up for any questions from the commissioners to staff. Um, yes, Commissioner Taylor Brown?
Hey Dan, do the, uh, would an ADU then get its own address? Would it be like the primary residence be unit one and the secondary, the accessory be unit two or so they could get their own mailbox?
Um, Commissioner Taylor Brown, yeah, potentially they could get a, get a, uh, their own address related to that. It would be a second unit.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
I have a question as well. I, go ahead, Jer.
Um, so one of the things I was struck by that I, I'm just wondering if I have correct is, um, it looked like, uh, for residential zoning, uh, you can already build essentially another house on a lot. How is that different than from the accessory dwelling unit, uh, proposed amendment? I, what's, if you can already do it, why, why are we looking at doing the ADU? I mean, I think the ADU is a, an interesting idea, but I was just confused by that.
Um, yeah, Commissioner Young, so it's just the number that, like I said, there's about 30% of our one that is large enough to have that second unit, but then there's another 70% that doesn't. So they could only do a sleeping quarters currently.
Got it. That, that makes sense. Thanks for the clarification.
Of course.
Any other commissioners have questions? Sorry.
Yeah, I do. Chuck.
Commissioner Fink.
Um, I have a, a few questions. Um, one, in, in reading through the, the letters, um, several letter writers talked about there being an exception for HOAs. Could you discuss that?
Um, yeah, Commissioner Fink, um, there is no exception for HOAs. Um, just the nature of homeowner of HOAs is just the fact that they are private covenants that you sign into. They could potentially restrict accessory dwelling units if they wanted to, um, for their HOA. I think that's what the concern is, but no, this, this, it's not, we're not exempting, um, homeowner associations or anything that sort.
Okay. Um, and then in terms of the affordability, where you talked about how ADUs or similar kind of units are cheaper, um, what is the reduction? Cause cheaper could be 1% or it could be 80%. So what are we talking about here?
Um, I, I actually don't have those numbers on me, but I, I'm happy to look into, to see what that could potentially be, um, and what it is cheaper to quantify that for you.
So I think that'd be important. And, you know, you brought up Sam Hughes. You ain't gonna get affordable units in Sam Hughes. I'm sorry. Um, and a friend of ours who actually owns a house here, but is looking to downsize and was looking at, um, book renting what would be the equivalent of a, an ADU in the neighborhood was quoted for, for a house that was kind of similar to the size you're talking about, um, was quoted at a price of $2,200 a month. So that ain't affordable and you're not gonna get affordable in, um, Sam Hughes. And I'm not sure you're gonna get affordable. I think that's an issue that go need to be, um, explored more. Um, and then there's the whole issue of size. Um, I'm kind of, I'm sympathetic to the people who want the size reduced. And in looking at the, um, cities that you provided, um, none of the, the five cities that you show, um, allow ADUs as a thousand square feet. Um, I don't think they're really necessarily close to that. So I think that's another issue. And I was struck by, you know, Corky Poster sent in a letter where he was very supportive of it, but the example he provided was essentially a granny flat, um, for his mother. It was 500 square feet. And there's a big difference between providing something, and that's kind of the, was the traditional idea behind granny flats or providing flats for family or, or whatever, where they're small. I'm not so sure that the concept requires being allowed to build a two-bedroom house on the property. Um, and so I think that also needs to be rethought, that what really is the purpose of this. Um, building 1,000 square foot homes, I think is different than providing what was traditionally granny flats or even small homes for, um, family members or aging in place and such. They don't need anything that big. So I think that's a, an issue that I think you would need to address. Um, and then I think in, in terms of height too, um, a concern I have is if you're allowing the ADU to be taller than the primary residence, particularly if it's in an historic neighborhood, um, you're kind of destroying the, the context of the neighborhood. If you can see this kind of taller house behind it, even if it doesn't affect their, um, property tax reductions, it still has an impact on the context and feel of the neighborhood. So personally, I'm sympathetic to people that say that the ADU shouldn't be any taller than the primary residence and maybe should, I'm not sure how you enforce it necessarily, but should ideally conform kind of with the design of the primary residence. So you don't have this kind of jarring difference. Um, so I guess that's where I am right now with this. Um, I mean, I've always been supportive of the concept. I think it's great in providing ability to granny flats and such. It's great. I'm just, um, my worry is, is this is going, um, too far the other way that we're kind of rezoning much of the city, um, where that's not necessarily going to happen. I think, oh, and I'm also sympathetic to the idea of, you know, you're having management companies come in and buying up properties. And so I think there's still a concern of you can end up with two rentals on the property managed by some third party who's not really particularly concerned with the neighborhood or affordable housing, which is a very tricky thing anyway. So that's where I am right now. I'm not sure what this may just be something that will has to be hashed out at the public hearing, which I think will be a very this may just be something that has to be hashed out at the public hearing, which I think will be a very interesting evening. But that's where I am right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Fink. Any other commissioners have comments or questions?
I have a question. With this accessory dwelling unit, they have to be on a separate electrical meter from TEP or would they share a meter with the main house?
Commissioner Lucia, there is no requirement for it to be on a separate electrical meter.
Is there any consideration from the city, given their electric vehicle charging program, that increasing the amount of square footage on existing services might overload the capacity of those services?
I I don't believe so. I mean, we can look into this, but as it is now, they could potentially build, you know, an addition on their home that would be just as large as whatever we're proposing for the for the accessory dwelling unit. I also will say that if from from experience that we've seen in other communities, these are generally dispersed and there aren't a huge amount of them, right? I I was looking at at San Diego last year and San Diego just recently. I mean, they really like loosen things up where they're allowing, you know, two ADUs and then what they call a JDU. The ADU is twelve hundred square feet, the JDU is six hundred, it's like five hundred square feet. And they only had, I think, you know, two hundred units in the entire city all last year that were permitted. So it's it I don't, I don't, I I think it'll help. I just don't think that it's going to create so much development that it's going to cause grid issues.
Well, it's not so much grid that I'm thinking about, but the individual load. So your standard family house has a two-hundred amp load on it. If you're creating a thousand square foot accessory dwelling unit and we're expecting that we're going to have home charging for electric vehicles, it seems as though we might reach capacity issues pretty quick.
No, that 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 actually, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying. That that is that is something we could look into. Our we'll we'll talk with our our building official to make sure that that's not an issue. Thank you.
Other commissioners have questions?
Actually, I have another question.
Commissioner, yeah.
So I'm interested also in a little bit more information about the amnesty program because, you know, it looks like there are lots of places that essentially have ADUs that are unpermitted and maybe don't meet code. So I'm just wondering what that program might look like and what would be the consequence of you know, a house that had something built thirty years ago that maybe wasn't permitted and is not up to code today. I mean, would would people then be forced to tear them down or bring them up to code? I mean, how would that work? Because I think that's a critical piece, you know, in Tucson being a relatively low-income community, I think lots of people have done that over the years for all the reasons people build ADU. So I'm just wondering what that would look like and, you know, some of the equity implications of that.
Yeah, Commissioner, I I, you know, and and this is one of those things where we're we're currently looking at other communities and trying to learn and and develop this program. So it's still in kind of its nascent stage. But so some of the things that we've talked about is so currently what our fee structure is set up is for if you want to permit an unpermitted structure, we double the fees, right? We charge twice as many fees to bring it to bring it in and and do that. So we can look at potentially incentivizing people to permit it through fee reduction. There, you know, potentially things that you can do are like technical assistance. I think ultimately it comes down to health, life and safety. We need to make sure that that is that that we're addressing health, life and safety and that these are safe structures. But there are things that you can do to try to incentivize people to come in during for that program to bring it up to code and then make it, you know, a, you know, permitted essentially.
Yeah, because I mean, I I feel like currently, if I'm not mistaken, if you have an unpermitted structure and you do want to get it permitted, it has to basically be brought up to current building standards, which, you know, I can imagine many ADUs that are currently built that aren't permitted are not. So I'm just, again, you know, wondering how that would work, particularly for lower income or moderate income folks. So I know obviously that question can't be answered now, but it's certainly important, I think, you know, going forward.
No, definitely. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions for staff? Guess hearing none. I had a few comments putting on my code nerd hat, but you did answer some of my questions about privacy mitigation and development regulations. Thinking of looking at the definition, I think it would help if it was accessory dwelling unit because that's what it's referred to most of the rest of the text. I think under section six point six point six point three point B, I think you could strike an accessory building, maybe an accessory drawing unit, because I think that refers only to accessory accessory dwelling units. So I think it's kind of not as clear as it could be, and I think reiterating what's allowed in the accessory dwelling unit in that section is a duplication that try not to have in the code. Where it says it's not a dominant, the dominant use if the thousand square feet is bigger than the existing house, then I think that becomes a dominant use on the site, at least the way I'm reading the code. The under section C detached accessory buildings, and I think probably should add an accessory dwelling units in that section can't be built. I know it's meant to cover all accessory buildings, but I think we clarified if it included accessory dwelling units in that section. Six point six point four, the first sentence after the heading. I think probably should be addressed that revised to say similar to what's in the residential section instead of within that's reused to a non-residential use instead of zone. Because the accessory dwelling units are allowed in commercial zones. I think that was about it. Under the definition, I'm sorry, it says it has ADUs and most other places it says access accessory dwelling units. It says must be installed in permanent foundation, and I know some of these can be added on to houses. Or, you know, on to existing buildings that assume that's meant to cover the permanent foundation, but it's tied to it in a way, but not exactly on the foundation. So unless there's any other questions from commissioners. I think that completes discussion and I asked for motion to set this item for a public hearing. Did you have a date, Daniel? Or, oh, yeah, sorry, July twenty eighth, right in front of me, twenty twenty-one.
Chair Martin, this is Commissioner Waller. I move that we set the accessory accessory dwelling units UDC text amendment for a public hearing on July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, it carries ten zero. Motion passes ten to nothing for additional twenty units text amendment to now be set for public hearing on July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you, everyone. The next item is item five, PDSD staff announcements. Have any announcements, Scott or Dan?
Sure. If you have nothing to do next Wednesday night, feel free to attend the public hearing on Sunshine Mile. That'll be going on and that is the the urban overly district along Sunshine Mile, and that is coming to a hearing near you soon. And evidently I need to thank half of my planning staff for attending tonight's meeting. Their dedication is remarkable and that's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Next item is item number six, future agenda items. Staff, please provide the commission with a preview of upcoming items.
Yes, just have a couple of things here. Accessory dwelling unit, UDC text amendment, public hearing on the twenty eighth. And that's really what we have on the on the agenda on the docket right now. So look forward to that.
Okay, thank you, Dan. The next item is called the audience. Ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak about. I think we're allowed to speak on the study session item tonight. I have a list of speakers. Start with Lois Pollak. And also, I'm sorry, I'd probably like to limit it to five minutes. We have seven speakers right now. So and if if somebody has said something before, you know, please don't repeat it. Try to just have new item items and issues. So Lois, you're first.
One thing I do want to mention is if if you are on a phone and you would like to unmute yourself, press star six and that would allow for you to do so.
I don't see Lois's name on the call.
Thank you. Next speaker is Meg Johnson.
Hi, my name is Meg Johnson. I've lived in Garden District neighborhood for thirty-nine years and have been a member of the Neighborhood Association Board for over twenty. I love my neighborhood, love my home, and I'm a senior who intends to age in place. I am speaking in support of equitable, affordable ADU housing that is city-regulated and proportionate to and compatible with current neighborhood character and appearance. However, I don't believe that the proposed ADU ordinance in front of you, as it is written now, will accomplish this. I'm opposed to the ADU ordinance as it is currently written. Garden District is a one-square-mile neighborhood from Grant to Speedway and Swan to Alvernon. Due to the affordable rents in Garden District, our neighborhood is already home to nearly seven thousand residents, seven thousand residents in one square mile. We have a seventy-four percent rental rate. What is the goal of the ADU ordinance? Eighty to ninety percent run rate, eight thousand residents? Also, the ordinance, as it is written now, is not equitable. HOAs are exempt if they choose to be. More affluent neighborhoods that have the wherewithal to qualify for historical preservation zoning and neighborhood preservation zoning will have stricter design guidelines for ADUs than neighborhoods who don't, neighborhoods that tend to be lower income and with higher populations of people of color and high rental rates. The final version of the ADU ordinance should be written to meet the HPC and MPC design standards and apply the same to all neighborhoods regardless of the economic status of the residents. The proposed ADU ordinance does not protect us from investors. In fact, as written, the ordinance is an investor's paradise, a quick way to double an investment. These last few months, house slippers and rental companies have devastated Garden District, purchasing properties at an unprecedented rate, paying cash and over asking price, converting owner-occupied properties to rentals and raising rents on those properties to an unaffordable level. National and local investors will maximize their investment in a property by building a second house on it. Two houses to rent versus one new bet. Will rentals in GDNA remain affordable? Will the investors build cute little casitas? Will they maintain their properties? From our experience, no, resounding no. I challenge the planning committee to drive through Garden District and the neighborhoods in the Grant-Alvernon area, and you will see that investors will use this ADU ordinance to exploit our neighborhoods as they have in the past and make every penny they can and from cheap, poorly maintained slipshod rentals. The ADU ordinance will have a historic and irreversible impact on the neighborhoods of Tucson. Please take the time to investigate more what has happened in other cities and rewrite our ordinance, reducing the size of the ADU and the height to one story. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Laura Tibbely.
Thank you for hearing me and thank you, Meg. Meg made a lot of my points. And actually, Commissioner Fink made some of my points too. I live at one sixteen North Mount Mabene, which is very near the university. And I'm sorry to hear what's happening in the Garden District, but I have to say that we in the near university our neighborhoods have had extensive experience with inappropriate development that exploits loopholes in existing zoning. So I want to say I'm in favor of ADUs for ADUs for all the reasons that are given. I'm very in favor of low-income housing and diverse housing. I'm very in favor of elderly or any family member being a place and be supported by family, and I'm definitely in favor of densifying our communities. But I agree that a thousand square feet is way too big. And I also agree that not mandating owner occupancy or requiring owner occupancy is going to allow for inappropriate development by absentee landlords, and we already have too much of it. Someone in this commission must know, well, Meg actually made it very clear, but someone on this commission must know that after the two thousand seven eight real estate crash hedge funds started buying up rental properties and jacking up the rent. And if there's not a requirement that one or the other of these two dwelling units be owner occupied, they are just going to become another item in our aggregating absentee landlords' portfolios, and that will defeat the purpose of affordability because they will just jack up the rent. And actually, secondly, the allowable square footage is is way too big. My three-bedroom house is only slightly smaller than a thousand square feet, and I would actually be interested to know exactly the square footage of the average house inside of Tucson city limits, because most of our houses are pretty modest, except for the richest neighborhoods. Housing activists really believe that a house that's more like three hundred, six hundred square feet is first of all affordable, and secondly, as Commissioner Fink said, really serves the purpose of being in accessory dwelling rather than a second house. And I'm particularly in our neighborhood, which a lot of our, unfortunately, a lot of our single-family homes are on our two lots, and when absentee landlords buy them, they just plunk another full-size house on the back. There's no room for a swing set. Your fruit trees are all gone, and basically that house will never be family housing again. It will only ever be rental housing again, because who wants to live there, right? So I, to recap, that that ADU ordinance, I'm in favor of ADUs, but I think it needs some refinement. I agree with Meg Johnson and also with Commissioner Fink that the size is too large, maximum size is too large, and that something needs to be done, preferably owner occupancy, but something needs to be done to preclude the aggregation of these ADUs into absentee landlords' portfolios. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. I forgot to ask for a name and address.
Oh, Laura Tibbely, L A U R A.
You gave me yours. I'm just saying for future speakers. Thank you. The next speaker is Lee Marsh. It's Lee out there.
I don't, I don't see Lee on the on the list.
Next speaker is Diana Lett.
My name's Diana Lett. I live at thirteen oh nine North First Avenue. I am the vice president of Feldman's Neighborhood Association. I'm also the chair of our Neighborhood Preservation Committee. I am a member of the Stakeholders Committee. I attended six out of the seven meetings of the Stakeholders Committee and also at least one of the public meetings. I sent you a letter, so you may have had a chance to read that. You may be aware that I have a number of concerns. I'm going to try and be very brief about this because you do have it in writing. I'm really concerned about the process by which we arrived at this ordinance and also concerned about some of the language, and Dan was kind enough to send me an email since I wrote you explaining point by point where I had misunderstood how the code actually works. Lovely. I've been involved in land use issues for twenty-five years. If this is opaque to me, the ordinance is pretty opaque. So I think definitely some work is needed to bring this up to speed. I'm going to specifically address what Dan said in his presentation about a possible fix to the size of ADU issues. So what he A possible fix to the size of ADU issues. So what he said was that for lot sizes. Less than or equal to seven thousand square feet, you would allow a thousand-square-foot ADU. So I own two lots of approximately seventy-five hundred square feet. One of them has a main residence of eight hundred and four square feet. And the other one has a residence of nine hundred and fourteen square feet. That is typical for the historic neighborhoods of the city. A thousand-square-foot ADU would absolutely dominate those lots. Um, and even if it didn't cause a loss of historic contributing status. Which it might not if it were in the back. Um, then if it were architecturally compatible, which is required by the NPZ zoning in my neighborhood. Um, it's still, it's still too big. It's would, as others have said, radically change. The nature of the neighborhood. So that needs, that still needs some rethinking, and. I'm going to once again advocate that the ADU be limited to a percentage of the size of the original home. Um, and I will also add that both the houses that I'm talking about have had additions built onto them, and even with the additions, they're well under a thousand square feet. I want to say just a little bit more about process. And I want to particularly talk about. The whole issue of R1 zoning. And this is, this is a hot national issue right now. A lot of cities are talking about eliminating R1 zoning, and some cities have already done it. If that is what we are going to do in Tucson, it needs to be done honestly by a process that the average citizen can understand. Not by the back door in a devious deceptive manner, which is what this ADU ordinance is unless we drastically reduce the size of the allowed ADU. That's not okay. It is so anti-democratic. It is absolutely heinous. And I really, really urge you to think deeply about what this implies about how we do business in Tucson. How our democracy functions in Tucson, because it's really not okay. And with that, I will conclude.
Thank you. Next speaker is Allison Solomon. I saw her earlier, but I don't see her now. Next speaker is. Sorry, Vania Fletcher. I think I see her on the list, but. Don't see any microphone attached, so. Is there anyone else? In the audience that would like to speak to this item or like to speak tonight? You say anything, Daniel?
Yeah, there's a couple. There, sorry. Um, there, it looks like there's a couple. Um, oh, there's also someone on the phone, but Logan Havens and Hannah Glassen both had their hands up.
Yeah, and this is Vania Fletcher. I'm sorry, I had a problem. I, I had, I had to get into the phone. I couldn't make my computer work. I apologize.
Thank you. Go ahead, name and address.
Vania Fletcher, eight, one, nine, one, East Daniella Lane. That's Ward Two. Chair Martin, planner, commissioners, I am a Tucson resident for the past twenty-seven years, but I am also a city planner for another municipality outside Pima County. And that's for the past fifteen years. I have recently completed research on, actually, on. ADUs, which is for a community that is low-income, seventy percent Hispanic, mostly zoned for a single-family neighborhood. Majority built, uh, post-war War II to the nineteen seventies and abiding an extension of the light rail. So my comments are really based on the need for affordability and equity. The equity issues are based on the idea that many cities try to adopt. These ADUs to respond to the lack of rental options, to assist low-income communities. In providing affordable housing, increase income opportunities, and plus proximity to transit. But my question is, how will low-income communities really benefit, which is the aim of. At least the beginning of this tax amendment. While offering ADUs as housing alternatives. The city should discuss who really will benefit from this tax amendment and be ready to provide a solution. As construction costs go, I am really not sure that anyone other than investors, high or middle-high income earners can benefit. We need to look at the type of client's ability to finance an ADU. Architects and cost and time. After all these years as a planner, it is not uncommon to see site plans return endlessly for corrections. Regardless of how much experience a planner, um, I'm sorry, an architect has. Also, the issue of permit fees and for someone who does not know maneuvering through the city's system in order to get an ADU approved. It is less likely that low-income families will know the know-how, have the cash and time to spend on architects. And maneuver through the system. They will also face more difficulty in securing financing. But there is something that the city of Tucson can do to facilitate this process and offset some of the costs. And this should be part of the tax amendment approval, not an afterthought. And that is the issue of permit-ready plans, which is something that has not been brought to you at all. In two thousand and eighteen, the city of Encinitas in California, under their Housing for Generations program. Issue on our SP for the development of permit-ready detached ADUs. Now, Encinita paid two architectural firms sixteen dollars, sixteen thousand dollars each for four sets of plans. The city, very wisely, I might add, uh, paid an additional four thousand dollars to each architectural firm. To make sure they could update the building code. When they are updated, so we can update the requirements. The information was given to me by Claudia Bingham and Suzanne Encinita Deputy City Clerk. Now, these plans are available to be downloaded from the Encinitas website free of charge, along with a complete guide on how to build your AUD. The city waves most of the permit fees if you choose one of their permit-ready plans. Why? Because there is almost no review other than looking at AD, uh, I mean, ADU placement. On the site, of course, the setbacks and building separations in the quotes. You have a little bit more information and a couple of links on my letter, so you can look at that a little bit later. Now, forty thousand dollars is not a large cost to provide the community with eight permit-ready detached ADU plans. Even if it costs a little bit more today, it is a good city and community investment. Housing funds could be procured, and I hope that local community organizations and architectural firms like my ex-professor, Korki Poster. Would be able to assist as well at a much lower cost, or maybe, who knows, for free. I don't know. Hello, Korki. Anyway, the only thing I don't agree with Encinitas is the ADU plan size. Their smallest one is almost five hundred square feet. Their largest is twelve hundred square feet. Twelve hundred square feet is not an ADU, is a head. You know, the city of Tucson should consider having plans for smaller detached ADUs. Starting with the size of a tiny home. Just so you know.
Excuse me.
I have to commute and I stay in the other city. I actually live on two hundred and eighty square feet. It's my student pad, and it works very well.
Can I get you to wrap it up, please?
Okay, so let's consider the equity to provide choices that are more financially accessible and can benefit lower-income families. This small detached ADU could be perfect for a tia or a abuelita, or for someone who needs to rent a small place. And you would not break the bank to build it, and it wouldn't cost as much in terms of city costs. So I would like to consider the rest of the information is on the letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I didn't see who raised their hand first, but I guess Logan Havens.
Yeah, sure. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I'm here to speak mostly because as a millennial coming into this conversation. I moved to Tucson about four and a half years ago, and at that time, there were a lot of apartments or rentals available in our neighborhood for around six hundred and fifty dollars a month. Now, currently, I've been checking Zillow. It's over a thousand one hundred per month in the neighborhood. Our housing stock, there are multiple hounds available under a hundred thousand dollar, or under two hundred thousand dollars and around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's pretty, pretty normal for a lot of the smaller homes in the neighborhood. Now, we haven't seen anything go for less than three hundred thousand in our neighborhood. So I think, uh, these conversations about changing. Fabric of the community or the, the view. I'm in an NPZ currently, so most of this will be dictated by the NPZ. But what I'm looking at is that my friends and my peers can't afford to live in my neighborhood, can't afford to buy in my neighborhood. We're moving further and further out. I just, I appreciate that the city is talking about this, and I hope that all of us who own homes and have that extreme privilege. Are willing to acknowledge that we came in at an opportunity when it was somewhat affordable, and now that door is closing behind us unless we do something. This, uh, ADU proposal is not a silver bullet to solve every problem. We're going to need to address. Density on a lot of levels through the city, through higher-density projects along made, um, higher-density areas, transit areas. And this, but this is one of the ways that like when I go through Seattle or when I go through Portland, I see. That the fabric of the community is not changed by the ADUs in these cities that I'm at. Of course, things will be different in Tucson, but I really hope that we look to these other cities that have. Had ADU policies in for multiple years and seen that it hasn't dramatically changed these neighborhoods. And if we want to live out a fear of change, like the city is changing, and the way it's changing is just making it impossible for me and my friends to be able to live within the city. So, um, yeah, so please, let's just like maybe consider the people who don't own their home or multiple homes in this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Hannah Glaston, name and address, please.
My name is Hannah Glaston. I live at two, six, one, nine, East Maple Street. Yeah, in the Blend and Elm Neighborhood Association. Which I wanted to ask, uh, Daniel, if you did receive a letter. I know my neighborhood drafted a letter as of June seventh. And I noted that, uh, a letter, uh, email exchange that you had not received a letter, uh, as of yesterday, and I was wondering if you did receive a letter regarding that. You did. Okay, very good. So we have some of the same concerns. Obviously, I'm not speaking for my neighborhood, uh, but speaking for myself. Uh, as some of the other speakers sigh, certainly. Uh, I also think a thousand square feet is, uh, too large. And, uh, I think there should be other height considerations, so I will go over all those things. Um, also, I don't think having a public hearing, I mean, you can have one public hearing in July, but we've gone over this for many, many, many years. We have these public hearings in the summer. When there are so many people that have schedules here or there, uh, as they're emerging from COVID, they are, they are leaving the town, uh, and, and they're not, uh, around. So if there is one public hearing in July. That's fine, but it would have to be followed by another public hearing in the fall. Otherwise, I don't think it's appropriate. To have a public hearing on a citywide rezoning such as this, where you only have a hundred and fifty-seven responses. And I think that a hundred and fifty-seven responses may be a large amount for what you get, but for someone like me, when I'm thinking of all the wards. Uh, and all the people, I don't know what the exact population is, but I don't feel that a hundred and fifty-seven responses is representative. Of the many neighborhoods, uh, that we have. And I noticed on the, um, stakeholders list. That, uh, two wards were not even represented, and I reached out to both those wards to make sure that they knew that they, you know, that this was going on, was gonna. Amount to a rezoning in their neighborhoods, and they said, well, yeah, we know about it, but you know, they didn't seem super concerned about it. I think that's very concerning, and I also think it's concerning that there's, uh, not a lot of response from the South Tucson neighborhoods. So, um, I, um, I think that that's it affordability-wise. Korki Poster said at one of the meetings. That it's now two hundred dollars a square foot, uh, to do any building, so unless, uh, somebody you know is going to be able to. You know, build for you. And I also, I want to mention that I speak as someone that has a, uh, a ADU in my backyard. My mother, uh, designed it with my husband, and we built it. We do have a set of plans. That would be something that we would be willing to put out there. For someone, uh, to be able to use. But, uh, it's seven hundred square feet. It's more than adequate. I think a thousand square feet is much too large, uh, a unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? I don't see any other raised hands. Seeing none, uh, we'll move to the next item. Item number eight, adjournment. And entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. I guess we'll see you next month.
Thank you, planning commission, members of the public.
Thank you.